Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 15, 2018 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones while you're speaking and turn them off when you're finished. Thank you. Commissioners present at tonight's meeting are Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Duggan, and Commissioner Doan, and of course, myself, Bernice Bagnall. First thing on the agenda is reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Good evening. I was going to say President Bagnall, but I believe it's still Vice President technically. So, and members of the Board. We will begin the meeting this evening, as we always do, with Safety Moment presented this evening by the District's General Counsel, Clark Balfour.
Good evening. So, it's August, and anybody who's been outside usually has an encounter with bees. And so, tonight, we're going to talk about badly behaved bees and whether we can coexist. And the "coexist" part comes because bees are quite like us, when you get right down to it. I mean, you could say bees are us. I can make this work. Come on. Do it. That was my best lead in it. Look what happened. Good? There we go. Bees are us. They're ornery, they're uptight, and they're territorial. And so, you know, with that, then, we all get cranky. Bees get cranky. And why? Because hot weather, the population swells. So, they're actually, the hives hatch at different times, but by this point in the year, you've got a full population of bees. So, now, they're out, and guess what? Food's getting scarce, they're preparing for the winter, and they're also protecting their queen and making sure that life's good over the winter. So, the queen actually sets the tone. Studies have been done. If you are a bee and you come from a hive with a nice queen, you have a little better disposition. If it's a mean queen, you're a little cranky to begin with. And, but there are also problems with no queen, because that creates uncertainty and tension in the hive. And so, you know, you may have a bee that's already left the hive feeling a little tense, a little nervous, a little cranky, a little everything, and be more aggressive. Now, also at this time of year, their dietary cravings change. More carbs, more sugary sweet things, meat for protein, and that's what you have at your outdoor picnic. So, what to do? Well, wear light-colored clothes, be careful with scents and colognes, to the extent that you can, hide food and drinks, but that's difficult, too, when you're trying to enjoy the outdoors. So, at that point, you can rely on traps, or citronella candles, or other things like that. Now, I do say space and barriers and dense vegetation. That's good, but it's also a little bit out of place, because, as I was doing my reading, if you're swarmed by a bee, you need to look for space and barriers and dense vegetation. So, if we get down to that part of the list, you may have problems already, that the other things have already failed. So, now, what not to do? The little guy down there in the lower-left, do not yell, no loud noises, that sort of thing gets him excited. Second, don't flail your arms, don't swat at him. Third, don't leave food, drinks, or garbage exposed. And hopefully, if you do these things, then we will all be happy, we will be one, and we will be cool. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Clark, does the district have an epi-pin on-site?
Yep. Thank you for that. Yes, we do. And, and I should have put that on my list. You're right. Epi-pins are very important. And I've, I've carried them in my car and everywhere for a long time. So...
Isn't it also true that you can take a Benadryl if you get stung?
It does help, too.
It depends on how sensitive you are to the allergens. But, if you'll excuse me a minute, I'm getting a phone call from the Kremlin. I'm not sure what that's about. Other, other news that's important here. As I'd mentioned last month, we're continuing to monitor for cyanotoxins. It's the class of compounds that caused the event in the city of Salem that resulted in the water not being able to be used for drinking. We've been monitoring both under the temporary rule that was established by the Oregon Health Authority, as well as the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule established by the EPA. And the good news, and the point of the whole report, is we have yet to detect cyanotoxins in the Joint Water Commission or the Portland Supplies into TVWD. We're going to continue to monitor. We will report all of the results as we receive them and make that information available, and obviously, follow-up if we do get any detections. Given the kind of late-summer state, I thought I would provide a brief supply update. And at this point, there are a couple of portions of the state now that are moving into drought status. I believe that several counties have now had governor-declared droughts in the county. The good news is that that's not the case in the northwest part of the state. And at this point, based on everything we know, we should have no problem making it through at least the traditional summer in terms of available supplies. I understand that Portland's Bull Run reservoirs are currently about 60 percent full, actually just a little bit lower than that now, since these numbers were released. And that's just about average for this time of year. Now, why is that average? Well, they've been operating their groundwater supply at a fairly moderate rate for the last month and a half, and that has allowed them to sort of stay at a normal level. So, they've really been running groundwater to reduce the risk of a shortfall. The Joint Water Commission reservoirs collectively are about 60 percent full as well. This is below average for this time of year, but is certainly well above the levels that we experienced in 2015, which was an unusually hot and dry year, and we were able to finish that year with ample supply to make it through the summer. So, again, we kind of feel there's a pretty high probability that we will be able to meet all of the demands this summer. While we have ample water supply to make it through the summer, we want to continue to encourage customers to use water wisely. Water conservation tips are available at the district's website, tvwd.org, as well as the Regional Water Providers Consortium website at conserveh2o.org. I thought I would mention, in speaking of the consortium, that the consortium's conserve H2O website will soon be bilingual. Many of the conservation features that are, items that are featured on the website have been translated into Spanish, and that whole set of suite, suite of the website pages, webpages, scheduled to go online any day now, if it hasn't already. These are important Spanish-language resources, or just another benefit that we receive as being a partner through the Regional Water Providers Consortium. And with that, I will turn it over to Clark Balfour, who will provide the department report this evening.
Thank you, Mark. So, see if I can handle the technology again. Legal Department report. Here we go. So, I'm pleased to report that the legal department is well, in case you're wondering. Talking about lawyers, so we're going to get the lawyer jokes out of the way first. There it is. I wanted to be a lawyer, but I didn't have the stomach for it. So, there you go. So, what we have next is, what are we doing these days? Ongoing and evolving projects. So, some of these things are, are follow-ons to projects that we've been involved with for some time. The Willamette Water Supply Program. Well, we're, we're still negotiating all sorts of intergovernmental agreements for pipeline design and construction, primarily with the county in Wilsonville. We're working through our right-of-way in land acquisitions, mostly for the pipeline and reservoirs. And we're also doing some coordination agreements with developers, because some of the areas that we're moving through are also under development by various private interests. So, how we coordinate our work, how we work together to bring projects in without delay to either, those are all things on our plates, and they all require agreements. So, we're negotiating a lot of agreements. Now, we have further ongoing and evolving things. The Willamette Intake Facilities Commission. So, we, we just stood up the WIF Commission. Dave and his team have selected a construction manager, general contractor, to build the raw-water facility, and we're also working on the raw-water line, pipeline routing, as it goes through the property that's owned by TVWD in Wilsonville, as well as through Wilsonville itself. We have other projects as well. We have the Grabhorn Reservoir, which is under construction, and there's a lot of day-to-day stuff that, that arises out of that. Ridgewood View Reservoir, that's been an ongoing issue, but that is coming in for a landing, as you know. We've done an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services regarding the customer information system. And lately, we've been doing an amendment to the Oregon Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network, or ORWRN. And really, that was spurred by the seismic issue. So, if we have the big disaster, and people can't get to work, well, maybe some of our employees can't get here. But maybe they live closer to somebody else, another water utility. And similarly, maybe somebody else's employees live close to us. So, we're trying to work out the amendment to that ORWRN agreement, where there could be, I don't want to say a loaned employee, but a shared employee, in a way, where you report here, and you report there, communication between the entities, but a way to try to cover your workforce in, in those times. Now, what's on the horizon for us? We have the Willamette Water Supply System IGA, which we talked about, and we are hopeful to bring that to you for final approval by the end of this year. We're rewriting the Willamette River Water Coalition IGA, which, as you recall from the WIF discussions, that's now going to be converted to the entity that holds and manages our big Willamette water right, along with Sherwood, Tuolleton, Tigard, and that's it. So, once again, something we hope to bring to you in calendar year 2018. And finally, there's always late-breaking things, too, and this literally is something that's come up over the last week. So, of course, the, you're starting to hear stirrings now, what's the legislature going to do in 2019? And no surprise, budget, PERS, fees in the general fund. And fees on the general fund has surfaced within the last week because of the Oregon Health Authority and the Drinking Water Program. So, they're going, as a result of cyanotoxins in particular, but also other things, the Drinking Water Program has figured out that they're not well-staffed, that there's been an attrition from, I think, 50 people, 49 people back in 2011, down to 33 or 34 today. And so, there's talk of the addition of the Drinking Water Program staff, which is a good thing, but the way that the proposal is coming out of the Oregon Health Authority right now is, it's all going to be fee-based to fund those extra positions, and those were going to come on the shoulders of entities like us. So, you know, what's at play here? And I think that where we really have to look at it is, we need a strong Drinking Water Program. I mean, that's, that's a benefit for everybody. It's a public health issue. The general fund, in our view, is the most appropriate place to fund that general benefit. The fee structure that the Health Authority has at least thrown out at this point puts the burden on us, and what we don't see is that the fee that they propose to charge is commensurate with the, with the benefit and the need that we receive. So, my guess is that there will probably be a solution that's a combination of some additional fees and something from the general fund, but that's going to be a big legislative fight, what comes from the general fund. What we don't want is, we don't want loss of delegation by EPA to the state for administration of the Drinking Water Program. You know, right now, there's a delegation agreement, and we have primacy by virtue of that agreement. But if we were to lose, if we were not to have a functioning program, or if we voluntarily chose to return that program to EPA enforcement, then we would lose a lot of day-to-day advice and working relationships that we've developed over many years. And from our point of view, we think that maintaining the Oregon Health Authority as a viable group is very important to us and to all Drinking Water Providers. So, look for this to be a big issue of negotiation over the next year, probably. So, with that, I'll take questions.
And if there are no questions, or...
Well, I was just... I was just going to say that, that I think it's really cool that we make, pick up employees who can't get to their jobs, just as our employees can't get to their jobs. I think that, I think that's nearly unheard of, and I think it's really nice that we're doing that, and I think our patrons will appreciate that kind of foresight. So, I applaud you. I applaud whoever.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
No, Mark has worked with the ORWRN folks and to try to put this in place, and it's taken a little bit of time, but I think that we're at a place where the, the mechanisms to do it are, will be there and in place, so that we can exercise it if we need.
So, just a brief reflection. I always learn something from these department reports, because I find out what's really going on within the individual departments, and tonight is no exception, although this evening, what I've learned is, I should quit calling this a team of attorneys that we work with, but rather, a school of attorneys that we work with. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And with that, that concludes the management report this evening.
Thank you very much. We will turn now to Commissioner Communications, and the commissioners will report on their recent meetings attended. I will start with Commissioner Doan.
Okay. I attended the work session on the 7th, the LOA Business Association meeting on the 9th, and tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Duggan?
I attended the board retreat that was held on July 23rd. I had a meeting with Mark to get an update on policy issues. I met, well, attended the 7th Board Work Session, where we talked about our drug policy and future board assignments, and then tonight's meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
I was out of town for the, for the retreat, so I was on the phone, which didn't work very well, so, and I owe Mark a, a comment on that. And the work session on the 7th, which also included the Beaverton IGA, and the regular board meeting tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you. On the 19th, I had a new board member meeting, my orientation. I participated in the retreat on the 23rd, the work session on the 7th, and then tonight's meeting for the board.
Thank you. I have a longer list than I normally have. I also attended the board retreat on the 23rd, doing strategic planning. And on the 2nd, I participated in a branding committee meeting, looking at refreshing our logos and planning for the next steps in that process. On the 7th, I had breakfast meeting with the CEO to do agenda planning for tonight. And on the 7th, also, we had the board work session with the Beaverton IGA status update. On the 8th, there was another branding committee meeting. We are working on scheduling a set of meetings. Andrea has come up with a really, Andrea Watson has come up with a really clever idea to crowdsource our logo designs, and that's very much less expensive than the process we were looking at before, and should get us a lot of different ideas. On the 13th, I met with Andrea and IT to set up my computer, so that I could Skype some of the meetings, because there is going to be a number of them, and I may have to attend remotely. On the 15th, of course, there's tonight's meeting. Do we have any topics that the commissioners need to raise? Okay, then, moving to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they're presented. I don't have any blue slips, and I don't see any members of the public clamoring to speak, so I'm going to assume we don't have public comment tonight. Moving to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. The items we have on tonight's consent agenda are A, approve the July 18, 2018 regular meeting minutes; B, approve the July 23, 2018 retreat summary, retreat meeting summary; and C, approve the August 7, 2018 work session meetings. And the last item is to grant the Chief Executive Officer, as per his employment agreement, the authority to amend the drug-free workplace policy, and the authority to create personnel risk policies, or make any necessary changes to other district personnel risk policies within budget appropriations without formal board approval. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All second.
You have a move and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving swiftly along to the business agenda, in full knowledge that there's paving outside. First item on the business agenda is consider adopting Resolution Number 21-18, a resolution approving a programmatic agreement among the United States Army Corps of Engineers, USACE, the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, Tuolleton Valley Water District, and the City of Hillsborough, and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to review and approve any revisions that may be requested by USACE, SHPO, or the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron.
So, if, if I provided any background, I would basically just steal Dave's report, so I'm going to just turn it over to Dave.
But I like when you do that, because it makes my job that much easier. So, good evening, commissioners. This may feel like deja vu or Groundhog Day, because it is a little bit. This item was brought to you back in March for the 28, the March 2018 regular meeting, and at that time, it was this very similar item, and you adopted Resolution 11-18 to approve a cultural resources programmatic agreement for, just as Commissioner Bagnall stated, the CEO to execute that agreement, and also recognize that some edits could happen, and giving Mark license to adopt those. Since that time, since March, both Army Corps of Engineers and SHPO created some significant changes to the document. Actually, a little bit more to the story. The final document that's in front of you today is slightly different than the original version, but in the intervening period, there was dramatic changes to it, and then those changes were reverted back to a document that's very close to the one that we had back in March. Given all of those changes, we felt it necessary to bring back to you again for approval with a similar sort of process forward. A little bit of background, or kind of a refresher of what we talked about back in March, is that our program, or constructing it, will entail ground-disturbing activities. And in that, we are working with the following resource agencies to avoid, minimize, minimize, or mitigate adverse impacts to cultural and historic resource, resources and properties. And so, those are the US Army Corps of Engineers, SHPO, the State of Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, and the affected tribes. In particular, the Confederate Tribe of Grand Ron has been the most active in the communications that we've had to date on this particular effort. This programmatic agreement is pretty important to us. It enables us to continue to advance while field survey work is still in progress. We've been able to get a lot of the survey work done for cultural resources, but not all of it. We do need our permit for the overall program, and this programmatic agreement basically enables us to continue the program while we continue the, the cultural resources work, as opposed to having to get all the cultural resources work done ahead of getting the, the permit for it. What it is, this agreement, it's an intergovernmental agreement between us, the City of Hillsborough, the Corps, and SHPO, not the tribes. Tribes rarely sign the programmatic agreements, but we, through consultation through the Army Corps, they're brought on board to this programmatic agreement. It does provide for permitting for design and constructing the Willamette Water Supply System in compliance with the National Historic Preservation Act. The stipulations in the agreement explain in detail the required actions to, again, avoid, minimize, or mitigate the impacts, again, kind of in that order. First, try to avoid. If you can't avoid them, then minimize the impacts. Then, if you do, if there's no way around it, then mitigate those impacts. All of that's defined exactly how do we do, how we do all of those things in this programmatic agreement. The revisions from the prior version, so what's different from the version that was in front of you in March? There's largely wording clarifications, fairly minor changes. We've, we are defining the resolution of adverse impacts, so it's a little bit more definition in terms of exactly what happens if there's adverse impacts achieved or realized. We revised the reporting. The, the SHPO really wanted some revisions to the type of reporting that we do on an annual basis, and also that the reporting is per major project on the program. The term has been limited, or the duration is limited to 10 years, and also established concurrence with SHPO in this programmatic agreement. Some revisions. Now, even, even though we've gone through these several iterations, we still anticipate some minor revisions may still be needed, but we expect them to be minor. In fact, we think we have all of those in-house. There may be still more to come next week. So, without request, did you consider adopting Resolution 21-18 as stated here? And I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Are there questions from board members? Do I have a motion and a second in that case to adopt Resolution Number 21-18, a resolution approving a programmatic agreement between the USACE, SHPO, TVWD, and the City of Hillsborough, and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to review and approve any revisions that may be requested by USACE, SHPO, or the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron?
So, move?
Second.
You have a second? Commissioner Schmidt moves, and Sanders seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. The last item we have on tonight's business agenda is consider approving the appointments of board officers and internal and external committee assignments for the 2018-19 fiscal year.
I have nothing. This is your agenda item this evening for your action.
Okay. One of the things I would like to say for the, for the viewing audience, all two of you, whoever you are, the board typically updates board and officer, board officer and committee appointments annually at the start of the fiscal year. In addition, recent, recent changes in board membership have created an opportunity to consider reassigning roles for officer and board committee appointments. The board discussed their individual areas of interest at the August work session, and the following people have agreed to serve in the following roles. I have been asked to serve as president for this term. Commissioner Schmidt has agreed to perform vice-president duties. Commissioner Duggan will serve another term as treasurer. Commissioner Sanders will serve a term as secretary, and Commissioner Doan will serve a second term as acting secretary. Do I have a motion and a second to approve these appointments of board officers and internal and external committee assignments for the 2018-19 fiscal year as outlined in the meeting packet?
So moved.
Second.
Whichever.
We have a motion.
He'll be the judge who, who beat who.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We have our jobs. And, seeing no other business, we will adjourn in time to get out of here before the paving starts.
Well, I do have one quick little item that I was going to bring up in our, our last business agenda item about historic preservation, and seeing that we have just a little bit of time before the paving starts, I wanted to reminisce about my first job in civil engineering, being low man on the survey crew, building Weir Road between Murray Boulevard and 170th. It was a gravel road at the time, in the mid-'80s, and I was assigned machete duty to cut through some thick blackberries on the edge...
It was a gravel road at the time, in the mid-'80s, and I was assigned machete duty to cut through some thick blackberries on the edge of the road before it dropped into a forested ravine. As I was whacking through the forested, or excuse me, through the, the blackberries, I dropped into the forested ravine and found a, a treasure trove of historical artifacts, because the pioneers back in those days decided to fill empty holes. Well, I have two, two bottles here, from, from that collection of treasures that I fell into. They're both bottles from the RJ Mann Beverage Company, bottling company in Hillsborough, Oregon, dated probably about 90 years ago, and these were thrown into this ravine, along with a whole lot of other stuff that I fell into. But if the board members want to take a look at it, these are kind of cool. You can barely read RJ Mann Beverages, Hillsborough, Oregon. There's a Nesbit bottle, and RJM Beverages, truly good. So with that little bit of indulgence, thank you for letting me extend the meeting, but I thought people would want to see this. Thank you.
And you, for some reason, that reminded me of something I was going to mention earlier in the month-end review report that the staff prepares and goes to great trouble to prepare. I noticed a new section in it, this, a new paragraph this time in it, that says key events to anticipate upcoming, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. That sort of calls out things to be watching for that might be anomalies in coming reports.
Excellent.
Is that everything?
Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned.